We start the meeting with a flag. I collect a allegiance flag of the United States of America. And this is a revolution for which we stand, one nation, united land, municipal soul, with liberty and justice for all. Today I have a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from August 1st, 2024.
Move second.
Any additions, corrections, whatever? Hearing none, is there anyone in favor?
All right.
Opposed, carried. Public comment? I'm going to give a question for citizens who are with the board.
James, tomorrow our divisions. Got a couple questions. Are we, is there, has there been an event that we're trying to solve by doing this? Is there anything on public record that, you know, we have that's being addressed?
Oh, you were talking about the food trucks.
I'm talking about food trucks, yes. I'm curious.
There is, well, A, there's, code is in the books.
Yeah, I understand that.
And that did go in the books, if my memory serves me right, when our codes enforcement officer was informed what the laws from the state were. And indeed, there was a food, mobile food vendor with unsecure LP tanks, which represent small bombs in a public area.
So, okay.
Which precipitated the need to know that people are doing things correctly.
And was that food vendor licensed and had everything else and had their information?
I couldn't tell you.
Because, I mean, I do understand that.
But the fire inspection part of it didn't pass enough, that part.
That, I understand what you're saying. But that's part of the whole county inspection and everything else. So they were in violation.
Yeah. Well, a mobile food vendor who's, who is adhering to all the laws is passes the county health department inspections in accordance with the state health department, needs to have fire inspection done by a municipal inspector, code officers, whatever. They need to have their vehicle licensed and registered.
Yep.
If it's going on the road, they should have a driver's license that's valid, that kind of, those things, yes. That's what the process of registering with the village does, is you show that. Now, and the purpose of that is to protect the citizens. And the second part is to protect businesses, restaurants in our community through competition isn't necessarily part of our community.
Okay. The other question I had was, if this does pass, will there be a follow-up for, you know, over a period of time for community feedback? And an assessment of whether this is desired by the community or not desired to then choose to rethink or redo?
Always.
Is that something that's going to be?
I mean, the community could say, we don't want food trucks in our community. Heidi, Scandia, Alice, we don't want food trucks in our community, but not a lot. Who knows? I don't expect our community is going to say that. Who knows?
Yeah, I think most of them do. I mean, I look at what's on the island and the attendance there. I look at various events, and it's something that brings people into the village, but it's also something that the people in the village really enjoy. I'm concerned if that takes that away by what we're doing. And if we can evaluate that, do we have the option to say, okay, we were wrong?
I'd say I would expect yes. And these food truck events aren't what precipitated things. There used to be food trucks which would set up at various locations in our community that were not necessarily of the same standard that everybody is experiencing today.
Mr. Gray, if I could just, there are two types of food trucks. There are those that are invited, and there are those that are not invited. And those, those that are invited are part of a, let's say, a Paper Mill Island, they're there as part of a celebration, or someone else might have a food truck come as part of, let's say, the auto show, or have something so that way.
So that's, that's going to be allowed in this particular?
I'm not saying that. I mean, but the other, the other part, which is similar to the door-to-door transient market or selling or whatever, that people just need to be registered with the village. So food trucks that decide they want to come in and park wherever they want to, I think the regulations need to really take care of both and make it, maybe perhaps make it a little easier for those who want to have a food truck, which is part of a celebration or been invited by someone. But as I say, I think the issues are entirely different for those two different types of food trucks.
Yeah, I think an event, A, I would assume that the event coordinator already knows, has already made sure they have liability insurance, they had this, they had that. Or else the event coordinator and the organization is indeed liable if something goes wrong. So I can only speak for one organization familiar with. You know, all the insurance paper is in place before anybody goes out there. And if they don't have it, it will be removed and have it in the facts.
My wife can mention that, you know, bringing food trucks to the village has been something of a hot button for me that I want to do for the last two years. So the fact that it's actually growing in the last year, and I can see the families coming into the village is really exciting and makes me happy. And I'm concerned if we go in the other direction.
Part of it, when this originally precipitated, if you've got to go back in time, COVID, you've had neighborhood blocks would bring in food trucks. Those little block parties were exposed to, you know, they're just hiring a food truck. They're not necessarily looking for liability and stuff. If they were going to work, and this is just involves a lot of other places, if they were in the village and were registered with our clerk, you could call and say, is Joe's hot dog truck legit? And we'd say, yes.
Was that done in the past?
Pardon?
Mr. May, was that done in the past? There was a registration of those people?
They've supposedly been registering. We stalled it all off this summer because everything was in limbo. So we didn't ask, people did call, and we told them, no, we weren't in a place where we could do that at this point. Including the fees, because the fees were for solicitor permits. It's not what we were looking at.
Jim Dale, Simbia, so you can just to follow up with for that. I have a couple of questions that popped in my head. So the status between uninvited and invited, so anything that the Center for the Arts creates as an event, we're inviting the food truck in, how does that differentiate from the uninvited, assuming if some guy shows up with a chestnut?
Perhaps down in Burnberry or somewhere.
In this particular case, you have a revision on some of the voting on today for the code.
I don't know if we're voting on, it's on the, but yeah.
But as part of that revision, is this a clarification between those two things?
Yes.
In my mind, it is. It's the, there's the existing, and then the other proposal replaced, more or less.
But the existing code hasn't been enforced up until this point anyway?
Pardon?
The existing code hasn't been enforced up until this point?
Oh, not this year.
Yeah. But it hasn't, the passage on the bill on the books for two years, right?
No. I'm like, you're joking, because I don't know if Greg's, it's been out there for a couple of years.
Yeah, it's been, for the two years or two.
Greg's been on for a couple of years.
I think so.
He put it in.
It's in, okay. So then my second question would be, so then, how does that affect individual businesses? Say, for example, the bed and breakfast, I'll sit out of my room for a minute, the bed and breakfast wants to put a hot chocolate stand out on the curb for the Christmas party.
It's not a mobile food vendor. The lemonade stands, those girl's scampi cookies, those aren't mobile food vendors.
Okay. If I invite a truck in? If I ask the Bolitos to come and serve hot chocolate, which is.
If you invite a food truck.
I invite a food truck.
To park in front of your house, the police will have a vote because there's no parking there.
It's not on my side of the screen anymore. How many in my driveway? Again, it gets all hypotheticals there. I'm concerned for two reasons. I did speak with the certistry food truck association, again, at length, I spoke with Nick Centauri, I don't know if you had a chance to, I might have.
I did speak with him, but I spoke with three other vendors.
And then they have just general concerns about access. They don't want to create, they don't want to be in a situation where they face bureaucracy to conduct business. And they do business beyond just with the charitable organizations, they do business with other businesses in town. W2, T Brews, for example, brings food in. So is that considered an invitation, or is that an uninvited? That's the clarification.
If a food vendor says, I think Tuesday night in Baldwell might be an opportunity, they're uninvited, but.
Well, as I'm saying, a scenario where the business invites them.
And our, with the village, they can do business.
So in the situation, that's what I'm going to get this clear in my head, in the situation with where the business has invited them to participate in, you know, Thursday nights at the B and B, we, whatever it is, that's an invitation under the code? Ruthless shameless in her head, so I don't believe in her.
I do not believe that phraseology exists in.
No, it doesn't. I just wanted, and it's like having the lobster truck show up in the, in the parking lot out here is one thing, having, you know, our food trucks or ice cream trucks going up and down the streets in the village.
Okay. And they're actually excluded. They're uninvited?
No.
That's it. It is not included, they're excluded. Excluded.
Yep.
Under the code as it exists.
Yep.
Okay. Almost got that in my head. So the idea of an uninvited, just somebody that shows up at random, we don't know their name.
Yeah, somebody that's not part of an organized something.
Don't buy the lobster out of the lobster truck, by the way. But yeah, but it's part of a.
And maybe that doesn't ever happen.
A lot of Boy Scouts are bringing a lobster truck in to sell lobsters. Raise a day of honor.
Cooking names. Say Noble's Plaza. Let me try that and see if it works. It'd be nice to know that he's been inspected.
And just to head back to James's questions, I think that the air that I want to let out of this balloon is that there's a misperception that there's a goal to ban food trucks from the village, which is not the intention here.
Just make sure that it's safe.
Right, they're safe.
Their propane tanks aren't going to blow up, they're not going to give half of the residents of Baldwell some food poisoning.
You know, it would be really unfortunate.
Probably not.
And any minor events, maybe not in our great festival, but yeah, okay. So in that particular case, then, we're looking for a, a level of permitting that's going to happen for the, anybody who wants to.
Permitting is basically making sure you have all your ducks in a row.
Sure.
And then you have all your ducks in a row, you can come.
Come in at the beginning of the season, prove that you're, you know, got whatever.
And some of the regulations in the existing code are really strict. And I think overbearing is something that I don't really feel are.
Puts it all on Joey's shoulders, so let's get her out there to open session.
To do background checks and all that stuff, no.
All right. So lastly, there's a level of bureaucracy here going to be imposed, not by requiring new health code or new fire, just compliance with.
Correct, yeah. Compliance with the existing laws.
The things they should be complying with.
Anyway, right, of course, yes.
And we assume that that we deny.
I randomly stopped at the food trucks on Paper Mill Island, they all hang in their certificates, and I can't test the temperature, the means, I don't know if they have one of that anyway, but the county says that they are. And so the structure in the existing code, to do that inspection is going to fall to the codes?
The structure to do the inspection as required would be by the codes officer.
Codes officer, okay.
Thank you. And is it, well, it could also be done by an officer who happened to walk by a food truck and saw a no health thing up there, could say, hey, where's your, where's your food inspection thing? You need to stop selling food.
I heard it's that gas coala tank or something.
Yeah, that would be really bad, Mike. And I don't need to beat the stick, I just want clarification. So if as a business, I want to hire a food truck to participate, the uninvited is really invited because I'm, yes, they're not showing up randomly.
Yeah, but as I say, the same thing, it's like door-to-door salespeople have to pop in the clerk's office and register before they can go door-to-door around the, around the village. And the same thing should be true for food trucks that just want to pop in and park wherever they want to. Because we wouldn't even know that they're there. And I think we need to look at the language, or maybe we can work on the language proposal a little bit, so that there's a sponsored food truck that's totally different than a roaming food truck.
And we're looking for next chances.
You look to you and Jim, it isn't.
Food trucks tomorrow.
I'm worried about if you're torn out or anything.
But it'd be nice to be ahead of the game, absolutely.
Next year when it rolls around, the season comes back.
Mr. Gray, real quick, some of this isn't to do with the health department. Back 25 years ago, when we were doing chicken parm because of the fire department, we had to have our own certificate for, to be a vendor, and we were subject to surprise visits, which we got all the time. And the county would actually come out and do that. If we didn't have that certificate there, we weren't allowed to go anywhere. So it's, some of that is.
That's actually happened over the course of Paper Mill. We had two random health inspectors come out this past couple of weeks, they do show up and say, hey, that's what they do. That's what you wanted to do.
Just, just so, one thing I was aware of that Bruce brought to our attention is, we had a lot of talk last time about the food truck association.
Yes.
And I don't know if you want to speak to how limited it is, that they only take certain people and only one of each county. So if it's a one-ton truck, they're not taking three taco trucks. So it's exclusive. And it's not something that we can hook our wagon to as something.
We can't control.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't going to suggest that anyway.
Well, I didn't know that twice, I spoke, or too early before I realized that that was the situation.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't think that was a good standard for that anyway, because there's two pizza food trucks that want to compete, you know, sometimes they.
Only two?
Only two. Amongst all the food trucks, there's only two. I have a plan. All right. I don't have anything else to say about that, but we'll be back. Anybody else?
Mike Johnson, W2 Brews. Last time I spoke, I spoke more in generality in the community. This time, I reviewed through revised code, and I want to speak more specifically how this code is going to impact my business personally. One of the aspects, obviously, is to protect brick and mortars in the village, but there's aspects in this code that are definitely against us, so it doesn't seem like we're included in that umbrella. First off, I just want to clarify, hopefully somebody can answer here, we have our portable beer trailer. Beer is not considered food via the federal or state government, so I'm assuming it doesn't fall underneath the food code at all.
No, I think the food code specifically says.
We're, yeah, we're not regulated by Anadog County Health, the FDA, food is not considered a food item, so per definition of the code, we are not food. All right. I would like also to mention there, too, you have in there, mobile food trucks cannot serve alcohol, which I just want to put it out there, food trucks, a food truck can't get a license to carry alcohol and drive around in due places. They have to get a permit for the specific location, like a one-day permit or something like that. So while you put in there that they can't do that, for example, let's say a private business is having an event, they have a food truck, that food truck can apply for a one-day alcohol permit, and the only permissions are required by the landlord, which you guys are, you know, for the village, are Paper Mill, that, and then the state determines whether or not alcohol can be sold at that location. So I'm not sure whether the village has the authority to shut down a food truck at a private establishment. That's just something you probably shouldn't take.
Unless appropriately.
Well, I mean, it's regulated by the state liquor authority, so I just want to make it clear, a food truck can't have a license to drive around with alcohol. The state licenses that particular location. And I don't know if you could go in and stop them necessarily, whether the village has the authority, just thought I'd throw that out there for you guys.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it can be revised to say unless, unless, well, I could keep it in, just to say unless appropriately permitted by the state liquor authority or something.
And then there's two other elements in the code that actually will, so our business model, obviously, food trucks and breweries are a common thing. So, you know, it feels like our model is not really welcome in a way. So one of the things in the code is, if there's a restaurant within 100 feet of me, that restaurant has the right to deny a food truck. So in front of me, there is the other storefronts. If one of them storefronts turned into a restaurant in my building, that restaurant owner has the right, per your code, to prevent me from ever bringing a food truck in or inviting one. Then also in your code, you also have, if I'm within five, have a food truck and I'm within 500 foot of a fair, festival, civic event, I have to give permissions or, you know, or pay fees to have a food truck. So if you guys are doing an event in the park next to me, I can't necessarily have a food truck. So now I got to keep track of all the schedules, people adding stuff in, and then I risk violate that a food truck that I invited is now in violation of the code, and they could get cited or fined, which I do want to talk about, you know, I don't have any problems with the permitting, but I will mention, you know, the fines, depending on the level of your enforcement of this code, you know, the $250 fines, the $1,000 fines, whether it's spoken or unspoken, depending on how aggressively you go about fining or inspecting these people, it will be kind of become an unspoken thing between the food trucks. These guys all talk that it's maybe not a good idea to do business in Baldensville. And depending on your level of enforcement, it may get to the level where it impacts things like Seneca River Days and things along that nature. So I do want to throw that out there. But you do have two items in the code that make it difficult or even impossible for me to even bring in a food truck. So those are the two items in the code I would like you to consider, because they actually work against us as a brick and mortar location. One of the aspects of the code is to protect brick and mortar locations. We had got permission to add a kitchen on to our, to our place, we were going to add food, I lost the person that wanted to do the kitchen, but we were still going to proceed about it, and then we had discussions. And I just want to let you know where we stand on it. So when I started thinking about adding food, there's a lot of restaurants, there's a lot of competition, things are tough for restaurants, they're tough for us, and I have all the same costs and issues, changing consumer tastes that I have to deal with, and brewery equipment is not cheap, starting a brewery is very expensive. So I got to thinking, do I want to compete against these other restaurants? Because in a way, a brewery with a food option is actually an enticing option in the village. And many people come into the village, they'll go to the restaurants, and then they'll come to my place, because they can hang out as long as they want, which they can't do at the restaurant. So I saw that, but we're complementing the restaurants. We have takeout menus for all the local restaurants, people order all the time and have food delivered from the local restaurants to us. I offer up the place for free for birthday parties, retirement parties, I don't charge anything for that, I assume the bar bill is going to cover it, many times, almost all the time, those are catered by local restaurants. So I view myself being a good, you know, good citizen, I would figure, I'm more of a compliment to the restaurants, I don't want to compete against them, you know, I could have an unfair advantage. And another thing is, we're dog-friendly. As silly as it sounds, we get tons of people. If I have the food, the dogs are gone, including my most favorite employee, Norm, our family dog behind the bar. So I decided it was better to live, to be a compliment to the restaurants, figured it was mutually beneficial to each other. This code, though, is starting to make me rethink whether that was a wise decision. I mean, the food trucks at my place, we do, we've restricted it now to just Fridays and Saturdays, it's a couple hours on Fridays, a couple hours on Saturdays, maybe six months out of the year. So I don't see us as a direct competition or a heavy competition to the restaurants. And in the winter time, I see us as an enticement, to entice people to come down to a restaurant, eat, and then come over to our place, because it gives them two places to go. But this code is definitely working against us. While your intent is maybe to protect the brick and mortars, it's definitely not protecting us, and it is definitely going to work against us. One other element of the code is protecting the public on that. And recently, one of our local brick and mortar restaurants, I'm not going to answer it, saw public record, had serious health code violations and failed their code. Would I expect the village or the police to go in there and do a follow-up inspection or possibly fine them? Absolutely not. That's between the Anadog County Health and our local brick and mortar restaurant. A lot of these food truck vendors, they may not always be from Baldensville, but many of them are from communities adjacent to us, Liverpool and Clay. So I kind of see that, I kind of view the community a little bit larger just than the V-ville all the time. And I think it's kind of a double standard to inflict that on local people, local businesses, that you would never even think about doing that to one of the brick and mortars in the interest of public health. So you're worried about them giving people food poisoning, so you feel that you need to add a layer over and above Anadog County Health, why don't you feel that need to do it to the brick and mortars?
We're not adding a layer above Anadog County Health.
But you're.
Saying they have to show they can inspect it.
Yes, but the code does say that they can get inspected by the police.
Fire code inspects those restaurants now.
Yes, but your, your code says that the police or a village-appointed health, health code person, or the codes enforcement can inspect these people for any violations. To me, you're inspecting them for their health code as well. It's very vague, see what I'm saying in the code specifically, what they would be inspected under. So you said, the code does say they can get inspected by any one of those three entities. What they're getting inspected for, it doesn't say it's just inspected, they've already been inspected by somebody else, doesn't say whether the police are going to inspect them for motor vehicle violations. I mean, it's not very clear. When you're dealing with Anadog County Health, like the food trucks are, there's a very specific code, you know what I mean? There's very specific layers that they know what they have to do and not do. So there's a little ambiguity there on what they're being inspected on there, which is going to cause some apprehension on the, on the part of the food truck vendors. So I understand where you're coming from, but as I say, I don't know if this is really going to be, you know, public health. It does seem a little like a bit of a standard, the way the code is written, and, and as well as, there's things in there that basically are, we, it feels a little targeted against us and our model, we could essentially be shut out. And we can't afford to lose any business anymore than any other brick and mortar in the community. One other thing in the code that I forgot to mention, too, is you also talk about setting up in a public right-of-way, X amount of time. I do just want to go on record, which I checked when we first moved in, that road in back of us is not a public right-of-way. It never has been, so us setting up food trucks in there, in my opinion, is not a code violation.
Like, we weren't targeting you.
But it will, it will target, it will have an impact on my business, is the point I'm trying to take, this food code, especially those two elements with the 100-foot. I mean, I get a restaurant in front of me, what restaurant is not going to say, I don't want a food truck, and then I'm done per your code, I have no recourse. Same thing with the park, I can get shut down for any civic event, and just trying to keep track of what's going on on there, or if somebody makes a complaint, I'm in violation of the code, and the food truck's in violation of the code. So there are elements in there that definitely work against us.
I'm just, I guess, your 100 feet that you're envisioning, are you going through the building from the back of the straight line to the front of the building?
100 feet, we still go around, from the side or the front, still 100 feet?
Is it, yeah, okay. Where the food truck.
And the park is.
Where the food truck usually is, in the middle of the back, if you had to walk up. if you had to walk all the way around.
It's 100 feet.
Is it? Okay.
Yep, I went did the survey, it confirmed, hoping it wasn't the case. And it doesn't, it doesn't say what 100 feet.
Yeah, no, just say we're, you know, we certainly know by you would feel like you're not, not to.
But the code doesn't mean what 100 feet means, and then the park. I would love to see the park next to us used for more civic events, whether it helps us or not helps us. So I'm worried if that starts being used more. If a food truck comes, like for example, you know, parade of lights or something like that, and I decide to bring a food truck in that late in the year, I, I can't, per your code, right now. All right, so, and I know that probably wasn't the intention, but it definitely works against us. It feels like our business is gonna be on the receiving end of this, and I feel like we, you know, we should be afforded some protections as well. It does, you know, like, some of, you know, you know, it's kind of like, it, it feels, it does feel a little against us, and I will say, we do our best to be an integral member of Baldensville. And the seven years that I've been here, I can't even tell you the untold requests I get for charitable donations, and we try to fill them all. I have easily donated over six figures in monies into charitable organizations into this village. This code, I think, will definitely work against us. And in a way, when I start to dwell on it, I signed a long-term lease because I believe in this village. I still got two and a half years left. If this thing does impact my business, I'm gonna regret actually being here and because I wish I could exit the village. And if our business is impacted by this. I understand where your intent is, but I would like you to take these things into consideration and how they impact us. And we've always given due consideration to the other businesses and definitely to this village. But this code is definitely not going to work in our favor at all. I don't see how we can. And depending, like I said, on your intent, on the level of enforcement of this, it could impact larger community events as well. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike will take your comments into consideration.
All right, thank you.
Mary Ann Lyons, Mayor of Baldensville, Chamber of Commerce and Division Street. And even though the taproom's been in the village for seven years, this will be their 10th year in business.
Correct.
So I'm expecting a party.
We're in the Village 9 years, actually.
Yeah, that's right.
Two and with four corners.
Four corners. We have a lot going on. On Sunday, we have a ribbon cutting for the newly renovated American Legion Post 113. That's at 1 o'clock. Two days in a row, we're gonna be doing ribbon cuttings. On Saturday, September 7th at 10:00 a.m., Sullivan's MMA Open House and ribbon cutting. He expanded next door, made his business even bigger, so we'll be there. On Sunday, September 8th at 12:30, Haven Jiu-Jitsu is celebrating their third anniversary business, and we will be presenting the owner, Ben Teleny, with the Business Person of the Year award. And if you're not familiar with Ben, he's a remarkable individual. Not only does he have a dojo where he teaches Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, but he works with law enforcement officers to teach them Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, and then they in turn work with Atro's children. Fascinating guy, really doing good work and running a successful business.
Could you tell me where it is?
It is, um.
Which one of the?
It's in the, Tops is here, it's in this building. I don't know how it's.
River Hall.
It seems, yeah.
Between the 50 Shepherd and the Chinese Restaurant. And the bottle, next to the bottle, return.
On Wednesday, September 18th at 6:30 p.m. at the Baldensville Public Library, there is this, we're cosponsoring a seminar called Demystifying AI, How Small Businesses Can Unlock AI for Greater Productivity. And like I said, it's at the library, it's free, but they ask that you register in advance. You can either do that through the event on our Facebook page or going to the library page. And then we have this little thing called Taste of Beville. On Saturday, September 21st, noon to 10:00 p.m. And let me tell you, Matt Hunt, who's the president of the Chamber, and I sat down this morning and went through all the requirements of the Health Department and what has to be submitted. And then we went through all the things that we have to do to get more than four alcohol vendors on the island. And Jody, I'll be coming to you soon with all that information, is a lot. So they do have to pass a lot of things. And I just don't want to see us make it any more difficult. And I was talking to a restaurant owner yesterday, and he said, I love the food trucks on the island because when we finish there, they walk over to my restaurant, or they walk up the street and go to another restaurant and get a bitter. He says, it's been great for my business. So I'm asking that you repeal the current code that's on the books and take another look at the proposed code before you vote on it and make some revisions that Mike suggested and address the concerns that we've all brought up. Thank you.
It's only three people left out there. Anything about the food truck? Don't need food truck.
Really quick. I can tell, I speak a street. We're wrapping up on Davenport Island. The last three events that we have are productions of Your Good Man Charlie Brown. They are evening performances on Friday and Saturday, and then a matinee at 2:00 p.m. on Sunday, the 25th. That's the 23rd, Monday, 4th, 25th.
Not this weekend.
Not this weekend, the following weekend.
Hopefully, no more.
And no more. And food trucks have abandoned us for the State Fair, and they will have to be back. And I just checked, they called me today. Their season is wrapping up. And after Labor Day, it's hard to get them coordinated to get them all back. So.
Plus they're exhausted.
Yeah, plus they're exhausted. But I'll, I'll have some kind of overall report to you guys when, when we've all wrapped it up. Along those lines, I just want to address Baldwin Canal Square. Everybody knows where that is, right? It's the big gigantic concave pit that always gets my feet wet for, for Ghost Walk. If there's any way to create any kind of drainage, it's moving to all the existing blocks out of the way so the water has someplace to go. Ghost Walk is going to be held this year and early in October, October 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. Remind you to come on down and get my application and permit out there. But if the weather turns, I don't know if there's anything that the DPDW can do. Overall, that's long-term planning, but to create some kind of gully where the water just doesn't pour back in towards the fountain, that would be really helpful.
Maybe not put water in the fountain the last week of September.
Well, maybe that, or maybe we could think about moving that fountain off the center and moving it out into the grass where even if it leaks, then it's not, it's being absorbed into the ground. It's supposed to fill in the plaza with 40-foot diameter, or as I like to call it, the body. All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address?
I'll be very quick, and those of you who know me know I'm never quick. Shelley Hoffman, 45, West Downey Street. And I did come tonight because of the food trucks. I wanted to hear what everyone had to say. I am here in support of Mike with WT Brew. He does give back to this community quite a bit. I think most of us in this room can attest to it. And I did go out in the community and talk to different people about the food trucks and the way that they felt, because it's not really about me, it's about the community. And if you are looking to make revisions, please consider especially the points that he made about what it's gonna do to impact his business and the amount that he gives back to our community. And if there's a way to revise it so it doesn't impact him as much. I do also agree with the fact that the regulations need to be met, and the village needs to find a way to do that so there are not problems in the community. And that might be a little bit different than some of the other people's point of view, but, you know, from the standpoint of the Rotary and different events that I do with food trucks, we do want them to be safe. We do, we do our own checks, we talk to the people, we talk to the Onadoga County. We do what we need to do. So going back to the uninvited and the invited, I guess I'm not quite clear on if the Rotary is inviting it, do they have to go and register? Is that registration done because Rotary's doing all of that?
In the future, my vision would be that Rotary would invite Shelley Hoffman's food truck and say, are you registered with the Village of Baldens to do business in Baldensville? And could either include that registration fee in the fee that we charge them to be there anyway? And to say you just need to be registered.
And then they would take it upon themselves to register?
All they do is come in and showing the documentation.
Okay. And then the, there's a fee associated with that, that they pay the village as well?
There would be, that's not set, talking nominal fee.
And would that fee be a one-and-done for the year? Or is that something they would pay every time they would come to the village?
It is not indeterminate, but it might be a one. Or if you're a vendor who says, I would like to come to Baldens multiple times, they might opt for a multiple.
And like a pack?
Season pack.
I mean, $10 for coming once and maybe $30 for, or something. I don't know, I'm just throwing numbers out there.
No, and I, and I appreciate, it's just that clarification, right, of exactly what it is. And when we are talking to the food truck vendors, we know exactly what they can expect when they come here.
See, right now, under the existing code, if we were enforcing it, they would be having to pay $30 every time they show up, or $130 to be there for the year. I think those are the solicitor permit numbers. And we knew we didn't want to do that. So, so we've not really been, I can't say this out loud, but.
Well, and like I said, I'm just looking for more consideration when you guys are going back and taking a look at it. Because it's, it's not easy, I don't pretend it's an easy thing to do. But that's what's the importance of this meeting, is to get how it impacts other people that you're not trying to necessarily impact. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there a committee, part of the trustees that is working on this thing specifically? Is that part of the?
I don't know.
Is there a committee?
No, there's not.
I didn't know if I could remember who this is, BW or Public.
But as you're, as you're building a new.
I think it's a one.
But a committee of seven who has heard everyone's concerns now, and when we review the, we may say, this doesn't address Mike's concerns, or this doesn't address the Rotary's concerns or the Chamber's concerns.
Anybody have anything else, either from up here or out there? Okay, if not, we will move on to trustees comments. I'm gonna put you on the spot, Don.
Oh, okay, well, I'm, I'm actually gonna wait till the motion is on before I say anything. And so that's all I have to add at this moment.
Okay.
I will stick with the agenda, huh?
I will too, agenda for me.
Mr. Mayor? I think just the agenda for me.
Are you actively still looking for a food truck for those three nights, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Uh, we are.
I gotta call on somebody then. Oh, no, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. I have only a couple of comments I wanted to, to give the board and community an update. I met with the new director of county planning, Troy Wachner, regarding ways the Village of Baldensville and Onadoga County can interface, working together in the world of planning. And it was promising, but Troy seems like a good intention sort. Also wanted to mention, and I'm gonna, I don't know how much I want to mention. I don't know if you're gonna mention what occurred Sunday evening?
I was going to mention that, yes.
I just want to then remind the community that school activities have begun. Band camp, athletic practices. The crosswalks now have a population of kids. As we all know, kids think they're invincible. So I'm asking everyone out there to anticipate that somebody will be in the crosswalk when you approach it, as opposed to just driving through. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is the Main Street grant for 2425. We finally got the green light for all the people who applied, and we're talking like $400,000 worth of improvements to storefronts to go ahead and start working. This has been a long, slow process. Unfortunately, the construction season may be about winding down now that they're told they can begin. But we just got that go-ahead today. Other than that, I'm gonna stick to the agenda. And moving on to department headings, we'll go to Bob.
Just a little bit, I did meet with the ZBA this, this Monday, and we, again, we were going over the sign ordinance, so that'll be their proposals. I kind of wanted to hold that back until the food truck thing was taken care of. And then they, they are also wanting to look into the zombie house situation to see if that has to be tightened up all that. So just want to let you know that they're very active because we don't get that many applications for zoning variances in the village, and they want to really participate in assisting the village with some of the problems that they see, either with the code or with any, any existing zoning problem. So they're, they're working very hard.
Do you think they want to put their eyes on the food truck, the existing code?
I'm sure they would.
And see if they have any thoughts?
I'll, I'll, I'll give that to them. And I also suggested to Kevin Clark that when, when we do bring this sign code revisions, that he come, or that somebody from the, he volunteered, that somebody from the ZBA would be here to present them, not just me, so that you could get a taste of what their thoughts were. So I'll mention that to Jim Zuccolato and on the, on the food truck thing, see if they're interested. Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Village clerk?
I'll stick to the agenda, thank you.
Treasurer, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I got three, three real quick things. One is the equalization rates from New York State are out, so I'm happy to report for simplicity's sake that Van Buren, the Van Buren side of the village and Lysander side of the village are once again the same. Equalization, they're both 80%. So the state considers their assessments here and in Van Buren to be 80% of the market value. That's number one. Number two, I spoke about it earlier, but unless there's an injunction, we're gonna move the email processing, or the email provider processor to another entity from where it was for security and backup reasons that we discovered, I don't know, a week ago, week and a half ago, that were not known to our IT person. So, so it makes sense to do that. It's, it's cost neutral with the exception of paying the contractor to, to make the move. And the other thing is there's an agenda item 8C for the receivables. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them at that time. Other eyes?
Moving to the senior senate, what's your take today?
I will go ahead and follow the agenda.
Cross to PPW superintendent Chuck McGol.
Chuck, a couple of quick things. A lot of departments been still busy doing a lot of upgrades in the brown track area where the paving's gonna start in a few weeks, and we're doing entire brown street. And they're out there changing some valves and doing a lot of, a lot of work that we needed to get done. Every three years, we have a leadon copper sample that we have to take, and there's 20 houses that have been picked. And we're just having trouble getting, getting all the samples in. And if your house is one of those houses, if you could just try to, they just, they just have to take a sample in the morning and get it in. We have to do this every three years. And the deadline is coming to an end, so hopefully that you get, get that taken care of. The highway's still doing a bunch of tree work. We had a lot of fun the other night. The rains that we seem to be getting are just crazy. I mean, we never had this much water in this short amount of time. We're gonna do a little, we've done a bunch of work on the water rav up off of Canton Street, it's been fantastic. We need to get around Castle Bridge, we wanna do some of that in the next few weeks to get some of those, those drainages around a little better. Down by Edgewood, Edgewood Court, they got it really bad, and that, even in from Lysander and parts of the village that runs down by the railroad tracks and comes out of Ninety Street and goes that way, and it's just, nobody's been in there in years. And I'm not sure, some of that may be railroad right away. So the last few storms, it was much worse than it's been over. So much water so quick, it's just, it's kind of crazy. But we're, we're trying to keep on that. Like I said, paving's gonna start in two weeks. The BFW, I think most people know that the BFW's been sold. The owner is anxious to get in there. We had some complaints and some problems with lawn grass down there. The Alberiches on Lock Street, they've got that all cleaned up. That wasn't mowed for quite a while. They're mowing that, they're mowing that a lot now. It looks, looks much nicer down there, and they did. they're mowing that a lot now, it looks, looks much nicer down there, and they did get in there and mowed down a lot of the VFW, build VFW property, and that's looking a little better. So, other than that, unless there's questions, what's up?
I have comments. The new owner of the VFW, I don't know if James Thrasher reached out to you, I directed him to talk to you, in terms of, it's gonna need a zoning change from what it was, to what he hopes to do. So, but, so they will be upgrading, and did Alberichi mow that for him?
I don't know who, I know it's.
The new owner is related.
It's, he's related.
Part of the family.
It's the same engineer, and they've been, they've been red front, wanted to meet with us and tell them that they're gonna be there, and their engineers talked to me a couple of times about getting in there, getting some of the stuff done, and they've been very, very positive, and I think it's gonna be good, and hopefully with the building going on Lock Street, but it looks so much better down there now than it's all been before.
And you said you expect paving in the next two weeks, but on your DPW agenda, it said late September.
Oh, that's, that is a misprint, it's a September, supposedly late August, and it depends on, it depends on the rain, and when they are, but they're hoping, they're hoping to start grinding the end of next week, maybe the beginning of the week after, but if it rains a few days, everybody gets pushed back, so.
That was just my clarification.
Yep, the water works done, so we're ready for it to start, and it's just, you're at the mercy of the paver. And the paver's, paver's the key, because the minute that paver's done, they just load it on a truck and goes to the next job. And if it rains, he gets pushed back, so hopefully, you know, in a perfect world, the next two weeks, our paving will be done.
Moving on to our police department, Chief Lefench.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned earlier, that you alluded to, Sunday evening, a little after nine o'clock, incident occurred on East Genesee Street at Curtis Ave, where a seventeen-year-old village resident was struck by an arm and a bill while she was crossing the road there. She remains, on my last word, in very critical condition at the hospital. And our officers initially responded, and quickly realized the severity of the incident, notified the lieutenant and myself, and I made the decision to request the assistance of the state police to conduct the investigation due to the very serious nature of our victim's injuries, and the need to have the scene, what we call AIT, the Accident Reconstruction, and the state police have the capability of doing that. Not to mention the manpower, personnel resources that will be required for an incident such as this. Officers need to respond to the hospital, notification to the family would require two individuals, so even though the lieutenant and I both responded in, our resources available to us, we only had two officers on duty, would dwindle pretty rapidly in the cause, personnel-wise, associated with that, it'd be great. The mayor and I, Monday morning, had conversations about this. We'll be following up with the commissioner of DOT, as well as others, regarding that intersection. At the time of the incident, it was dark, based upon the information I have, the individual was wearing dark clothing, and the person that was driving the other vehicle was going from one job to another. That remains under investigation, I'll let the state police handle, handle that. The next day, I was in contact with, with the school district's administrative team, letting them know that this had happened, and I've remained in contact with them throughout the week to offer assistance. Obviously, we've got our school resource officers that are familiar with, with this person, it's a village resident, and I know the school district sent out a message to the school community to let them know that resources are available through their crisis team for those that are impacted by this. So, it just underscores the need for some greater pedestrian crosswalks and things here in our village that members of our board have advocated, and that, and that this board as a whole, and myself, have pushed for. Mayor and I certainly plan to push for that intersection, to receive some greater scrutiny by DOT, to see what improvements can be made there regarding lighting and enhanced crosswalk, and things along those lines, to notify drivers of pedestrians crossing there. So, I do have a couple of other comments, but if there's any questions that anyone might have.
I requested the DPW, when they put out one of the green, try to make that crosswalk a little more evident of people coming down, I'm sure your officers often have people who are driving too quickly into the village come out.
Yeah, and that area is obviously downhill, it's coming from outside the village, where the speed limit's greater. I was just talking to Chuck, and I were having a sidebar conversation, I think, that got hit by a tractor trailer.
Already?
Already.
The first day.
Yeah, so, that's why I think some of the engineering things that we can do, they're gonna require a little bit more enhancements, that what we can do is a bill, that is a state rule, so the state DOT is in control of that intersection. So, Mayor and I have already discussed, I'm holding off writing that letter for some reasons, I will articulate offline with people, but I have a draft, kind of outlined as to what it's gonna say, and the mayor and I will both sign that, asking the DOT commissioner and the governor to, to take a look at that. Is there anything else on, on that topic? Very well. Mary Ann, you missed one thing, we were talking about the Chamber.
You're right, coffee talk.
Coffee talk, see?
I'm so sorry.
The, the Chamber hosts a couple of events every month for their members. One is the Chamber Luncheon, and they generally get a pretty good turnout, I couldn't be there yesterday with the death of my mother-in-law, my late wife's mother, but I heard it was very good. And, but I was at the, their coffee talk event at Latress Salon, that were celebrating, I think, the twentieth anniversary in business, and again, that was very well-attended. Twenty-twenty-five people there, from different businesses, and around balls, so it's just a more informal event. And in September, on Tuesday the tenth, we're actually gonna host that here, in, in this room, and the police department's the host of that. We hope to have, if the weather's decent, a couple of police cars for people to take a look at, and we're gonna host that here at ten o'clock.
They're looking forward to the police car thing.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll have, we'll have some umbrellas or something set up and, and things. And then, we had, just during the National Night Out last week, one of our officers attended that with some of the community outreach things that we have for kids to take pictures with, and some handouts that we have through donations that are received, and that was a, a great event, and very well-received as well. There are a number of agencies, police agencies from the county that participated in that over at Long Branch Park. And then, the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services hosts a symposium every year in Albany. They have over a thousand attendees from a broad, diverse spectrum of criminal justice practitioners, from probation people to social workers, to the people in the defense bar, and prosecutors and police. It's a real cross-section of people, and I've been asked to be a presenter this year at the symposium on Thursday to talk about service leadership in the future. I'll be talking about the purpose of policing, and, and how those things intersect and relate, and be doing a one-hour presentation there, which I'm looking forward to, given the presentation once before. But I'm making some refinements to it, and hoping it is a little better than the first time that I did it, which I thought was okay. Other than that, I do have one agenda item, which when we get to that, as it pertains to the police department, I would like to make some comments before action by the board. Other than that, that's all I have, unless there's further questions. Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, pending business. I would request a motion to table this once again. Keep it pending until we're ready to act.
I'll second that.
Who is the first one?
No, I'll be the first. Bruce is making a motion.
But it's seconded.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. New business. Item A, motion to appoint Griffin Rendazzo as Senior Recreation Leader, at a salary of forty-one thousand dollars, with an effective date of August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. This appointment is contingent upon him passing the civil service exam for this position.
Second.
Any discussion? Griffin, would you stand?
Yep.
This is the person we're talking about.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you, excited, good study.
We need your show, mother.
I will do a donation here to her.
Item B, motion to appoint Jasmine G. Stevenson as full-time police officer at a salary of sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, with an effective date of September first, twenty-twenty-four. This appointment is pending the successful completion of a physical exam.
Move it.
Second?
Yeah.
Discussion at this time will turn over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Jasmine is a graduate of Jordan Albert High School, and then graduated from Lemoine College in, in three years. We're hiring her off the civil service list. She'll start the police academy on Monday, September ninth. We'd like to have her onboard before then, so we can have her ride along with, for a week, with some of the people on our night shift, just to kind of familiarize herself, and they get a chance to, to meet her. She will be at the next board meeting, where we can do a formal swearing-in with her and, and things, but we look forward to her coming onboard. Obviously, it'll be a lengthy police academy and then field training process, but that will at least fill one of our vacant positions.
Police academy, how long?
Ooh, that'll be, I would think, five months or so.
Seventeen weeks, eighteen, twenty weeks?
Yeah, I, I can get the exact figure, but give or take five months. And then, our training, our field training program, again, lasts generally eighteen to twenty weeks as well. So, we're looking at a, at a lengthy process before she'd actually be in a patrol car on her own.
Something next spring.
Yes.
Get things going.
Yeah, yes, well, spring might be a little.
Spring.
Early summer.
Yeah, 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 spring, early summer, I think more realistic plan, but, no, we're looking forward to having her onboard.
She'll be ready for Saturday, February day fireworks.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Well, whether she's on or not, I can assure you, we'd have her doing something that day.
She's a little over three years, she's a quick learner.
Yes, no, absolutely, she's got some drive to her, so, we're looking forward to her, her joining our organization, being a part of the future for her.
Great, so another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Just, now I'm gonna ask a question. We, in our budget process, approved adding an officer about this time here, is that this individual? Or is this filling vacancy from last board meeting?
Now, technically, yes, because that, this person starts at step one of the PBA contract, which is what was budgeted for. So, that person really fits into that slot. Obviously, with, you know, Officer Tistanis' career change, moving into the private sector, we hope to find a lateral transfer, if we can, or someone with some experience. He was a top-step officer, so that person would probably slide into, to his spot a little bit better than, than, than this, because she, she fits exactly what was budgeted for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item C, motion to adjust the F-three-fifty, dash water payments receivable, and G-three-sixty sewer payable receivable, as outlined in document Water Sewer Balance Adjustment PDF. Everybody read their PDF?
Including the PDF, I appreciate that.
It's about time.
Last week, the last week, we have it, just leave it off.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll second for discussion, yeah.
Discussion.
I thought.
I just wanna explain a little bit what this is.
The F-three-fifty is not a Ford pickup.
You got another one?
No, just to be clear.
It's not a pickup, yeah. So, there, I mean, in a, I guess in a nutshell, there's a, there's another system besides our accounting system that takes care of billing water and sewer users in the village. It's, it's a great system, it's run really well, and this, this, I don't think has anything to do with the operation of that system. I think water and sewer bills are accurate, and they've been accurate. Part of the occasional one-off meter that fails or something is whatever, but that system works great. So, that data has to come over to the accounting system and be recorded correctly. That process probably has not been the best, tightest process for a very long time. And I think that that's not a reflection of the people as much as it just is that it grew from a small thing to a big thing, and it wasn't super important, and it was really easy before, and it's gotten a lot more complicated with the advent of credit cards, and we now take credit cards for payments, and there's all kinds of different settlements that go on there, depending on the card you use, all that kind of stuff, much more complicated. So, the system kind of grew out of, out of balance, I'll call it. The, the accounting system was not accurately representing what we were owed, and what was received, and, and revenue, and those kind of issues. So, long process to figure out the best way of what was going on, and how to tighten it up, and bring it exactly into balance. I will tell you that the, the New York State comptroller, the woman that I worked with, that used to work for them, was a CPA, and said, she said, there are very few people, places, that have this imbalance like this. That's not a recognition of individual work that we did on it, it's a recognition of, I think, how complicated it is, and how out of sight, out of mind it is to, you know, and I think what they do is they just run it the way they do, and at the end of the year, they just jam it into balance by making an entry, and then, you know, the next year, they go ahead, forward, and that, that just isn't a good way to do it. So, this brings this imbalance to the penny, and go forward, imbalance to the penny. It's reconciled virtually every day now, to keep it really, really tight, and, and a really accurate representation of what's going on with the water and sewer systems in the accounting system.
And to add, this was not, this is a bookkeeping stuff balancing, not dollars balancing.
That's correct, there's no money missing or anything like that, it's just that, the, the water and sewer billing system is what we used to call, in the business, the system of truth. That's the accurate, the right system. When we bring it over to the accounting system, we were not doing that correctly. So, there's no, there's no money, there's no rate pairs that are, have been, you know, billed incorrectly, high-low, there's no money that was lost or anything like that, it just hasn't been reported correctly, so.
Any other questions or discussion? Here, you all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Item D, a motion to approve the planning board as lead agency for the Bronze Foundry Lofts project.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? If any of you are interested, seeker report is sitting on my desk with all note. Says trustees for your review. If you, those of you who haven't been in there, if you'd like to review it. May you review it?
No.
What is it? Oh, it's the development, it's a proposed development, a planned development district down behind Beetle Supply, between thirty-one and three-seventy. They've had various names, right now they're on the Bronze, Bronze Foundry Lofts.
I've never heard that one before.
It would have been my choice, but that's.
That's what used to be there, it was like fifty, sixty years ago, there was a foundry there.
Oh, wow.
Bronze and New York.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Can I have a motion to pay bills as audited?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight-thirty-nine? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight-thirty-nine?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.